I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Ozark City Hall. We're glad you're here for the Board of Aldermen meeting and engaging with your elected officials. Listening to perspectives of city residents, business owners, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before the meeting begins, let's review our rules of order. These ensure the meeting is orderly and efficient while allowing everyone who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. There are two opportunities for you to speak: during the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion of the meeting, and during public discussion of new bills and resolutions. During the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion, anyone who signed up at the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m., the Wednesday before the meeting, can speak to aldermen about the topic they specified. Now, in the public discussion of new bills and resolutions, that allows you to give comments for aldermen to consider before they make a decision. The consent agenda bills are not open to comment. If you want to speak about an item on the consent agenda, you must sign up by noon the Friday before the meeting. You can do that by contacting the city clerk in writing, or fill out a card in the council chambers before the meeting starts. Write down the specific bill, and give the card to the city clerk before the consent agenda is set. That bill will then go to a first reading, which is open to public discussion, and anyone may speak about it. Anytime anyone is speaking, the following rules apply. First, only one person should speak at a time. Please be respectful of the person speaking, and hold your comments until it's your turn. Second, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Third, you must first provide your name and address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. These forms are provided near the entrance. You also must state your name and address to the Board of Aldermen using the podium microphone. Fourth, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and aldermen. Finally, all speakers have five minutes to make their comments. The mayor or alderman may have additional questions for speakers after their five-minute time limit. Occasionally, the board will invite someone to make a presentation at the meeting. This is only to give information to the board about a specific topic. These presenters will have no time limit on giving their information. This meeting will be livestreamed and recorded with video and audio unless there are technical difficulties. The use of cell phones or other devices is discouraged during the meeting. Please silence your phones right now. Again, thank you for being here and engaging with the city of Ozark. The meeting will begin shortly.
Real call, please.
Alderman Aiken is absent. Alderman Campbell?
Here.
Alderman Galloway?
Here.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Here.
Alderman Snyder?
Here.
We have four aldermen present. We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We have no minutes tonight to approve, so going on to our first. We have a ceremonial matter. We're very honored tonight. Have the daughters of the American Revolution with us tonight for a proclamation. They will come up to the platform, please. Would this pick me up, Maria? Would this pick me up?
Yes.
Well, we have a proclamation tonight on the Constitution that I'm very honored to present to the ladies. I want to read it now for them. Whereas September 17th, 2025 marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document as a memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebration which we commemorate the occasion. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and now therefore I, Don Kearns, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Ozark, hereby declare the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2025, as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution, reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that honor holds.
Thank you very, very much.
Oh, it's my privilege. I ought to do this.
You can.
Oh.
She's the chairman of our Constitution Week Committee, and so this is our annual poster that is done. We want to make sure that you have that.
In my mayor's office. Very good.
Get a picture here, quick.
We have no scheduled visitor/guest. We're going to move first attention to the considered agenda. At this time, city clerk, was anyone who signed up who wish to speak on any of the bills 3686 through 3688 tonight?
No one has signed up.
Okay, thank you. Are there any two aldermen tonight who wish to speak on one of these three bills for it to be removed from the consent agenda to be first reading? I'm not seeing any. Okay.
Your honor, I move that we set the consent agenda.
Okay, and this is for bills number 3686 through 3688. And is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor to set the consent agenda, do so with a show of hands. Anyone, and that passes. Now, we will need a motion and a second to read this consent agenda by title twice.
Your honor, I move that we read bills number 3686 through 3688 by title only, twice.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor to read these following three bills by title twice, do so with a raised hand. You want to oppose? No, that does carry. Motion passes.
An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation for eligible conference costs. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a CCTV and communications equipment attachment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. And an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into and execute a national opioid settlement agreements regarding Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family. I'll read these bills again. An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a cost-share agreement with the Missouri Department of Conservation for eligible conference costs. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a CCTV and communications equipment attachment agreement with Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission. And an ordinance authorizing the city to enter into and execute national opioid settlement agreements regarding Purdue Pharma LP and the Sackler family.
Okay. I want now the motion and a second to prove bills 3686 through 3688 to become ordinances 25-062 through 25-064.
Your honor, I move that we enact bills number 3686, 3687, 3688, respectively as ordinances number 25-062, 25-063, 25-064.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Real call, please.
Have it fast. Okay. Alderman Aiken is absent. Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf is absent. Alderman Campbell?
Aye.
We have four aye votes, two absent. All three bills are passed as ordinances.
Thank you very much. We have no second readings tonight, but we have one first reading bill, number 3689.
Your honor, I move that we place bill number 3689 on its first reading by title only.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. 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 We have a motion to place bill number 3689 on our first reading by title only. That was made by Alderman Galloway. It was same with Alderman Campbell. All in favor on the motion to discuss bill 3689, please with a show of hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Radmacher Brothers Excavating Company Incorporated for construction of Phase One of the Garrison Springs Trail.
Okay. We'd like to welcome our public work director, Jeremy Parson, to the mic.
All right. Good evening. Excited again to get up in here and start talking about trails again. So unfortunately, we're down a couple people tonight, but we did get to meet with them prior to their absence, and they were very in favor. So, but this is a trail that we've been working on for quite a while, as you know. This is one of those projects that we identified on our major theraphair plan and our major master plan, I should say, master pedestrian plan. And I wanted to give you some project updates. And I want to start by saying, again, this is a team effort. You know, some of the slides that you see in here today, Hayden provided these. This is a Park Stream. This is a Parks' Master Plan. This is a Parks Project. Public Works has the privilege of coming in and picking up the pieces and basically building this and putting this together. So you all know what's going on at Parks right now. It's exciting time, and if Hayden wants to jump up here at any point he can, Randall, we can all do it. Cameron, you are involved in this too. So it's good to see this come to fruition. But as you know, master planning efforts are underway. It's getting out there. And we specifically identified Garrison Springs as one of those nodes of activity that really need to be investigated further and maximized in terms of land use and the potential there. You know what they're doing with the Garrison Springs Nature Center. That's still in the planning phases. But this entire area just has so much possibility and so much promise, and it still remains a hidden treasure. And that's what we're going to try to resolve tonight. The Garrison Springs Trail, we're done engineering this. We put that out for bid. It was about 3,700 feet of linear trail that connects all the way from Third Street to the portion that has already been completed, that nice stamped concrete portion down at the actual Garrison Springs site. You guys know this. You see this slide all the time, but I think it's so important to show you that we dream big. We plan big. Now, this, I'll just kind of focus in on this. This is more about this area. As you focus in, you start seeing these individual nodes of activity. What we're really after here is connectivity and keeping people circulating, keeping people active. This is one of those offshoots, if you will, that just completely allows you to unplug. You're in the center of the city. You walk through Finley River Park. You go under that road, and suddenly you are in the middle of some of the prettiest Ozark wilderness you'll find, or Ozark woods you'll find around here. Here's an even closer look. Some of you all remember this. Now, this will be further refined as we do the master planning and everything, and Hayden will have a big hand in this, as well as the consultants and everybody in this room that volunteers their time to get involved. This is where we should dream big. It all started with this, to kind of plant that seed and get the grants and funding in place to secure the property we now know as Garrison Springs. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to make that connectivity. You all know that when we did the project along Third Street with the Finley Farms TDD, we kind of set that ball in motion. When we put that road in and we worked with the Finley Farms, the Transportation Development District, we saw an opportunity to connect underneath that road. We've been very, very fortunate and very, I guess, timely in our approach because we've had all these road construction projects, and it's presented an opportunity to get grade separation. So that grade separation is already there. And on this next slide, you'll kind of see it. If you see how that picture changed there. If I go back, and if I go forward, underneath there is what you're seeing is essentially the underpass. Well, it is the underpass. Then I'm going to blow it up. All right? That's what we're trying to connect. Right now, it's a space to nowhere, but it's opportunity. And as we continue this trail further to the east, here's what you run into. Okay, that was my little hippie bird flying away. But this is what you run into. And I like to affectionately call this a gateway to serenity.
Jeremy, you got too much time on your hands. If you can work that into your presentation.
It had to be worked in. It was a last-minute thing. Randall and I were playing around with it. It had to be worked in. But gateway to serenity, I mean, as you get to the point where we're talking about tonight, it really opens up into this, I'm sorry, I'm going to use Ozark terms, this holler that takes you back to the system of springs that occasionally are just a trickle, and that occasionally, when you're standing back there, you can't even hear yourself think. In either way is fine with me, just to get away. But I want to kind of put this in reference because what we're showing you tonight, we're not recommending that we finish all 3,700 feet of this trail. Obviously, money becomes a factor, and I want to talk about that. I want to talk about how we got to this point and how we're capable of seizing this opportunity. You guys know how important it is. You know how important it is to get this connection to Finley River Park because that is truly an event center, and that's how I see it moving forward. That is an opportunity for the community to get together. Hopefully, one day, when Hayden's got his master plan in place, the ball fields and whatnot are out there, and that truly becomes a place to connect. So this is a connection to a point of connection. I know that wasn't worded right. But how did we get here? We had to kind of bob and weave a little bit this year. I don't want to call it punting. I want to call it an audible. As we dove into the Highway CC Western Expansion, we quickly found out that the right-of-way necessary to accomplish that Western Expansion was just not cost-effective. So we went back to the drawing table, and we started talking to OTO. We started talking to MODAT. We started talking to city staff. And that's where we came up with a method to actually pay for this. And as you all know, over the last few meetings, we have reallocated some STBG urban funds to go to 22nd Street, which I think is a higher and better use of those funds at this time. That will accelerate the improvements on 22nd Street. We're also able to transfer some of the funds that we had along Highway CC because we were going to put a 10-foot trail, and we still are in the future. Our plans show that 10-foot trail on the north side of CC, but we're able to transfer those funds. And without going into too much detail, that has gotten us to where we are tonight. It's given us an opportunity to construct this trail. But again, we split this up, and we do this a lot. We put bids together, and we put alternates together. And what that allows us to do is put a base bid in place that says, hey, this is at minimum how far we're going to get to go. The base bid would have ended right there at what I call the Mitchum Apartments, right there at Sixth Avenue, right where you go up P Bridge and all that stuff that we've got names for. And to us, yes, that was a critical connection. It was a critical terminus, but you still feel like you're in an urban environment there. You still feel like it dumps you off into higher-density residential, and you've just begun. So when we really started looking at the bids, we dove into the numbers. And when I talk about those numbers, again, we had the base bid, Alt 1, Alt 2, and Alt 3. That allows us, again, to kind of pump the brakes and reassess our finances. We did get three qualified bidders on this. It immediately became clear to us that we wanted to get to that gateway to serenity. We wanted to get to that point where you're pushed into the woods. So by doing that, we chose base bid plus Alt 1. And you have the entire bid packet, I'm sure, in your packet tonight. I put it up on the screen here in a second, but it's horribly difficult to read, so I broke it down for you. Three bids, and this is base bid plus Alt 1. And we really felt like we got more bank for our buck and more trail by taking that base bid and adding Alt 1. Alt 2 will come at a different time. That's an expensive section of trail because of the hydrology, because of the creek, because of extending culverts, things of that nature that can really take the cost up. But this will construct the majority of that connection, and it will leave you into a space where Jackson Street already feels like a trail down there. So we'll get to that point. It's just this little thing called money, and we'll find it, and we'll continue to look for funding sources. By us leaving these two points unconnected, it will help us in the future with our grant applications to ungap the map. They will see two terminuses, one on the east side, one on the west side, and that will score so well in these grant applications that we put together. So have faith. It is coming, and we will continue to fight for that. Here's that document that I said you couldn't see, but I forgot about this cool little thing. Look at that. I got the right button and everything. But we got some pretty competitive bids on the base bid. By the time you threw in the alternate, the bid kind of presented itself. And like I said, these are all in your packet. But this allowed us to really get to that next phase, that opportunity to get into nature because of the prices associated with that. So that's the first time using that button, so that's pretty cool. Again, that red line represents about where that will end based upon Alt 1. I just want you to know that it'll get us into the woods. It won't get us quite all the way to Garrison, but we have a plan in place, and it's already designed. That's another thing that'll help us with that grant application. But what I want you to know tonight is that, you know, it's our goal to continue to deliver on these promises and to deliver on what the public wants. You guys are part of the survey. You see what they want. Trails are the top priority. Trails and roads and all these things, I mean, we are providing all of that in this because it's multimodal connection as well. What we're recommending tonight is the base bid plus Alt 1. Again, that will get us about 3,000 feet down the road or down the trail. I wanted, it's very critical to note this. This is all ADA compliant, so everything that we're building, that's a huge component of this. We want this to be accessible to every citizen. Sometimes grades don't allow you to do that. Sometimes you have to do other things, but the grades allow us to do that. So it's ADA compliant. Right now, what we're asking you for is to approve Radmacher's contract. I will say that they are here tonight. I will say that they are here tonight. Garen McElroy is here tonight. I have been nothing but impressed with what they are, the contractor on Phase Four, Five, and the spur. The quality of work that we've seen, heck, even their involvement in the groundbreaking. They moved heaven and earth just to, you know, to make that event happen. And seeing people that are as passionate about trails as we are and seeing people that come to the table with ideas and want to improve it, that's a good thing. Those are, that's a contractor you want in place. So we're proposing this. We know we've got support from the community. I don't even think we invited Friends of Garrison tonight, but I can tell you that they're pretty excited about this, and we've been hearing nothing but positive things from them as well. But again, we're delivering. We're delivering a true experience. We're delivering something that I think other communities don't have the natural assets to deliver, you know, by following this creek line and connecting to the river. This is something unique. And I go back to the Alt 1. We, by throwing Alt 1 into this contract, this makes this an exponentially better experience for the pedestrian and for the bicyclist. So, oops, that was in case that came off the agenda. That's what I've got. Questions? I didn't let anybody else talk. We can bring them up here. I get a little excited. I'm sorry, but this is a good project.
Any questions from, yes, Alderman Campbell?
Could you go back to the stationing slide? There you go.
Which slide?
The state one that shows, yeah, that one. Seventy, 1705 feet is base bid, right?
So we're getting about that 3,000. Here, I'll break it down for you. The base bid gives us 1,815 linear feet. The Alt 1 gives us another 1,185 feet. So that gets you right at about 3,000 feet. And then that remaining 706 feet is a doozy. It is, like I said, a lot of hydrology involved, a lot of crossings involved, but the plans already are there. It's just a matter of finding funding and building it.
Okay, that's what I was saying.
Anyone else from the board? Questions for Director Jeremy? Yes.
On the overview map, and this doesn't really have a lot to do with this trail, but it looked, I thought I saw Robertson Connection you called.
Yeah.
Can you explain that?
Yeah, absolutely. Let me get through my little origami here. Hold on. I'm getting there, I promise. So we just received bids for this. Last week, we received good bids for this. Basically, what this next project will do, where we've been replacing the water main, we received a grant to put a six-foot sidewalk along the north side of Robertson. So Robertson Connection will connect you all the way to Second Avenue and dump you right into the downtown. So on October 2nd, you will see that come to you. So get ready to talk about roads and trails again.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Alderman Campbell, just make sure, anyone else? So what I'm hearing you say is that last segment is going to cost us.
That last segment is more expensive per linear foot, if you break it down, but like I said, we'll get to that, and this will score highly on grants.
Good. Well, thank you, sir.
All right.
At this time, I need to open up, is anyone here tonight wishing to speak regarding bill number 3689? This is your time to come to the mic. Okay, I'm not seeing movement, so any final board response? Looks like we're good. Okay, bill number 3689 behold to a future meeting. At this time, our recognized city minister, Eric Johnson, anything for us?
Yes, sir, Your Honor. How long would you like me to go tonight?
Oh, at least two hours.
Oh, we'll see what, oh, I've got two subjects. How about that? Well, just a reminder that the next, the September 15th board meeting has been canceled, and the next board meeting will be October 6th. I believe I got that date correct. And we are very excited with Radmacher and what they're doing. If you haven't been by and haven't been paying attention to the news stories, Chadwick Flyer is abuzz, and we have steel on the east and west sides of 65, and they are progressing with the work on that project, which is very exciting. And I believe over the next six to eight weeks, they will complete the work of the ramps that are going to be in the support structure for the bridge, and in six to eight weeks, we'll be seeing steel over 65 Highway. So very exciting. And that concludes my comments, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Board, any final comment from us? Yes, sir.
With respect to the Chadwick Flyer Bridge, just out of curiosity, are we required to put any type of a protective screen around that because it's a pedestrian walkway?
I'm going to defer to our Public Works Director.
Yeah, so the last, towards the end of the project, you will see protective railing. We don't have to screen it completely, but there will be railing that goes along there, and that's all MODOT compliant, very similar to the type of railing that you see over Republic Road, where you see that black decorative fencing. And, oh, and out here on Riverside Bridge, that type of, so.
Got you. Thank you. I'm just curious.
Yes, Alderman Campbell.
Oh, just wanted to, I went to the Missouri Main Street State Conference, and they had a track, the reason I especially wanted to go is they had a track on partnerships between cities and especially centering on St. Charles, where it was and where the Missouri Municipal League Conference will be, and some of the projects they've undertaken there and how it's paid off for them. But the big announcement made there is the conference, the state conference alternates between Kansas City and the St. Louis area, those two areas. Next year, in celebrating their 50th anniversary, it will be in Springfield. And because we are the only Main Street community within a short distance of there, they will probably be highlighting Ozark. There'll probably be tours here that are given as part of the conference and will want us to give some, some of the workshops as well. And so that's something to look forward to.
The dates?
They haven't set them yet.
Oh, okay.
But it's in, in August.
Very good. Be great way for us to promote our city, for the state. Anyone else? I'm not seeing any. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion for adjournment that was made by Alderman Snyder. It was second by Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting to adjourn, just by show of hands, and that does carry, and we stand adjourned.